Last year's Lockport, Lockport High School wrestling team, they came in fourth in the state. And Coach Oster had, his brother was a state champion that day. And I just, I just love high school sports.
All right, everybody, let's get things rolling.
I spent my formative years-
We're gonna stand for the pledge of belief-
...in three gyms. Those gyms were Lockport Central, Lockport East, and what at that time was Lockport West High School, which is now Romeville High School. And my dad was a wrestling official and who did a number of state tournaments down in Champaign in the 70s. And so I traveled all over northern Illinois with my dad, going to wrestling tournaments and usually sleeping on the way home. So I'd like to introduce Coach Josh Oster, and he can say a few words about Travell.
Thanks for having us. So Travell, step up. Don't be embarrassed. This is the only time he's not talking right now.
(laughing)
Like Darren said, Travell was a national champ in 152-pound cadets. Cadet is a USA wrestling and United World Wrestling age group. It's a 15, 16-year-old age group. So cadet, so in, in this country, he's the best at freestyle wrestling. Freestyle's one of the Olympic styles for his age group. So Travell had a 60-something man bracket. I, they're, they're all very large there. This, the tournament that we were at, it's in Fargo, North Dakota. It's the largest wrestling tournament in the world by participants. Some, somewhere around 3,000 individuals compete over a week in a couple different tournaments, age groups, styles. Last year Travell was a match away from placing there, and I know that gnawed at him for a long time. So he, you know, he told Kurt Heron at the Herald News that he woke up and he dreamed that he lost. So then he had to go run afterwards in the middle of the night, so he wouldn't lose. And I believe that actually happened, 'cause, as I can, I know Travell. So he put a lot of time and effort into this, and it's nice to, for this to be recognized. And hopefully he can get his state championship this year.
Good job.
Good job.
Okay, Mervat, from one of our local businesses, Sizzles, had an announcement she wanted to give?
Hi, I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak today. I've actually come to raise awareness for Lockport Love. Our one-year anniversary for Sizzles is steadily approaching, and what we are doing is a back-to-school event, as well as a dunk-a-cop event. So you can come out, and any money that we collect through the event will actually go to support the Lockport Love charity, but we're focusing on the Fairmont district. It's really important that we extend to all borders of Lockport. So I know that my organization, we do profit nights for Butler and Taft, but I don't often see Fairmont represented. So what I've decided is that we're going to base this around the Special Olympics, as well as Fairmont. So it's just a good time to come out. We'll have samples of our food, we're gonna have the dunk tank, I'm going to have a band playing. So it's just gonna be a lot of fun for everybody. We are very family-friendly, so just stop in. It's August 23rd, and we will post more details on the Facebook page. So it's Sizzles in Lockport, and I thank you for your time. Very simple and sweet.
What was the time?
Oh, you know what? From noon until four. Noon until four.
Chief, will you be in the dunk tank?
Yes, and Chief will be in the dunk tank.
You will be in the dunk-
Yeah, you know what? I think I got a couple. I'm pretty sure I can get a couple aldermen to get in there that are regular customers.
I'll do it.
I'm looking at Darren, 'cause he said yes already.
Okay.
He's committed.
More people, more people would line up to dunk Darren than me anyways.
Yes, I'm hoping. I think I'm gonna make a post on topics. We'll just put it and make it official. So it's all out there. So you can check the topics page as well. It'll be started. Have a good one, everybody.
All right, thanks, Mervat.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Alice, what do you have for us on the city clerk's report?
What I have is the, I'm sorry, I'm not at that page yet, but I am looking, or provided in the packets, the executive session review and release. And Section A is all those, from those, that time period that I reviewed, from 2003 to 2004. Those are gonna be kept confidential. And the B will be the ones that I will be releasing. So if anyone has any questions-
Any questions?
...to those. And then, would you like that to go on a consent agenda?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, okay.
Consent for my time, so I don't know all those.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Planning and zoning, is that you, Pam?
Yes. Good evening. This evening, Matt Pegoria with MI Homes is here presenting and seeking final approval of his final development plans. The final plans are in substantial compliance with the preliminary plans, which were approved this past April. At full build-out, this project will have 232 dwelling units, 140 single-family, and 92 townhomes. The project will be constructed in three phases. The first phase will be that group of single-family homes closest to Gallagher Road, 'cause they will be using that as their model area and entrance to their model area. The second phase will be the townhomes, and then the third phase will be those lots that are closest to the existing Karen Springs subdivision. When this was presented at the preliminary review, there was substantial discussion on a variety of topics. The final development plans do incorporate those changes based on those discussions. They include adjusting the lot lines, so that they line up to the ones that are adjacent to the Karen Springs lots. Penny Royale Lane now connects to Case Drive, which will provide that more direct route to the community park that's being proposed on the east side of the subdivision. The stormwater management area on the west side of the property has been designed so that it provides and holds more water. And a path has been added to the open space area located on the northwest side of the property, which provides that pedestrian connection, which was requested at the sidewalk to 163rd Street. This case was presented to the Plan Commission on July 22nd. The Plan Commission comments are identified. I'm not gonna go through them, only because they really kind of revolve around issues that had been discussed at preliminary and resolved prior to the preliminary being approved. But for your information, because of the fact that you don't have the minutes available at this time, I just wanted us to summarize kind of what had transpired. Final engineering plans have been approved, and for anyone who has passed out at the site, mass grading of the property is underway. The annexation agreement did allow for them to do mass grading prior to approval of the final plans. The Plan Commission, by a vote of five to zero, recommended approval of the plans, and staff is requesting direction from the council to place this on the August 19th City Council Agenda for Action.
Any questions, comments?
For me, that's my neighborhood. I just wanted to say thanks to Matt for actually holding to his word, where he said he'd actually, in final engineering, try to do, pick up a lot of those comments. And the community, I heard from a bunch of the community saying that it's great that you were able to do that at final engineering, go through it. A few of them did still ask if you can still push the masonry, and that would be great. And then they're all happy. They're excited to see everything going on there.
Yeah, me as well. I sat in some of those community meetings with, with the residents, and it was nice to see that, that a lot of those concerns were addressed. So I thank you for that. Put it on as an action item. Do you wanna do consent, or?
Consent, okay.
Consent, yeah.
Thank you. Pam, you had PZ2 as well?
Yes. The next item, Hillwood Enterprises, has submitted a concept plan for 110-acre business industrial park, which would be located immediately east of the developing Pan and Tony development, which we approved of the final plans earlier this year. They're proposing four buildings, which would have a total building area of approximately 1.46 million square feet. Each building is about 200, or 366,000 square feet. All four buildings would include truck loading docks and designated trailer parking. Typically, concept plans aren't required as part of the process. But staff, when the applicant first approached us, we recommended that we take it through as a concept plan, because they weren't, they are not meeting the, the full intent of the comprehensive plan designation on the I-355 master plan. The con, or the comprehensive plan calls out for office business park. And essentially, what the applicant is proposing is an office industrial park, similar to the Pan and Tony development. In essence, it will, you know, be constructed by a different developer if approved, but it will, in essence, be an extension of the already developing Pan and Tony development. One of the issues that was of, of concern is that it specifically references in the comprehensive plan that warehouse distribution and other uses generating significant amounts of truck traffic should be discouraged. Hill, Hillwood's proposal would be more intense than what the I-355 plan calls for. However, it is, again, very similar to what we find in Heritage Crossing, as well as the developing Pan and Tony Park, as well as the future Tandem Development, which we also approved at the preliminary level not too long ago. In preparing for this presentation tonight, I did a little research on what the 2008 I-355 master plan called out for versus what that area was also called out for after we went through the updating process. According to both plans, there has, there had been no designation change from the 2008 to the 2014. Those were not parcels in that particular 159th Street sub-area that we did any reevaluation of with respect to market conditions. But as the council is aware, just with the adoption of the 2014 update, the city has experienced a significant increase, increase in interest in industrial development. I-355 is really the connection between I-55 and I-80, which for all of us who have traveled that, you know, it's pretty extensive with industrial, office, warehouse types of, of development. And that's what we would see, and we see is going on now in the city of Lockport, and would see that continue, because it's the most logical extension, given the two major roadways that, that the property, or that the area connects. The concept plan, as we're familiar, it will give the applicant an understanding as to whether or not he should proceed and move forward with the next steps, which would be annexation of the property, 'cause the property is currently not annexed, except for a very small strip, rezoning, and then preliminary development plans with ultimate final development plans. When this was presented to the Plan Commission on July 22nd, there were several concerns that were expressed by the commission. They were, they expressed concern because the proposal did not comply with the comprehensive plan. It was noted that the comprehensive plan recommends the office business park location to serve as a transition between the developing Pan and Tony and the entitled residential, which is located to the east of the subject property. Though, that was stated at the commission meeting, in reviewing the actual document, it was never stated that that area was to serve as a transition area. It just was designated as it was on the plan. It was also noted that the layout and design of the proposal lends itself to act as an extension or continuation of the adjacent industrial park, and that the commission was satisfied that the extensive buffer was being provided adjacent to that entitled residential area. The major concerns were the truck traffic, and there was a lot of talk and concern that this could develop into a truck terminal-type development. Because we will be, if this moves forward, because we would be annexing the property, we would have the ability during that annexation process to negotiate the types of uses that would be allowed in that particular parcel, similar to the way we did with Pan and Tony, with Tandem, when we modified their annexation agreements, and similar to what was done when ML came through several years ago. It was also stated that the higher office component would be more appropriate here, and that the buildings are too large. Some commissioners questioned whether there is really a need for more industrial development, when there are other developments currently going on in Lockport. The petitioner this evening will, like he did at the Plan Commission, address that concern with you tonight. And then there was also just the general, that the access on 167th Street, because it is controlled by Will County, if this project does move forward, there would have to be some input from the county with respect to how many access points would actually be permitted. When staff reviewed the plans, we didn't get into so much detailed review, as much as just looked at the general concept at this time. When they do submit for preliminary plans, we would do a more extensive review. But we did bring the, to like, the fact that there was an extensive number of access points into and out of the development, as well as within the development. It was kind of a chaotic arrangement of driveways and the access roads. So they are aware of that, and when it would come through for preliminary, we would definitely raise that again if it hadn't been addressed. So despite all these concerns that were expressed by the Plan Commission, they did vote five to zero to recommend in favor, with the only condition that when, at the time of annexation, that the uses that generate significant truck traffic, such as truck terminals, would be prohibited, and/or any other kind of use that would generate a high volume of truck traffic, perhaps be considered as a special use. With that being said, we're seeking direction to place this on the August 19th City Council for action. And the applicant is here this evening, and I know he would like to make a presentation and address some of the comments and concerns that I've kind of carried over from Plan Commission.
Can we just plug this in here? I'm a low-tech guy in a high-tech world, so-
Yeah, you're, you're okay. Open.
Got it, thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Don Schoenheider. I'm Senior Vice President with Hillwood Investment Properties, based here in Chicago. With me tonight is Greg Skovitch, who is our Director of Construction and Development. I asked Pam if we could have a few minutes tonight just to talk briefly about Hillwood, who we are, what we've done. We are obviously a, relatively new to Chicago, but we are a national company, and I'd like to spend a few minutes just kind of talking about, let's see, if I... Okay. That's so good. Thank you. Hillwood actually was, is a private investment and development company. It was actually founded by Ross Perot Jr. back in the late 1990s. They had the same Perot who, you saw his father running for president in a few years beforehand.
Oh, I'll see if I can make, you can keep talking.
Okay.
Oh, to the right, more, straight up, one more. Right, right, right. One more.
Oh, boy. We are a fully integrated investment firm. We're a private development company. Our firm is based in Dallas. And you can see, we're, we have a national company. We have projects throughout the United States. We actually have operations in Europe, as well as Mexico at this point as well. You get a sense of our presence here in the United States. We are, as I said, relatively new, six months here in the Chicago and the Midwest market, but are really a coast-to-coast company. As you can see, we've developed, at this point, over 50 million square feet of very high-quality warehouse distribution and logistics space all around the country, and have almost 15 million feet under construction today. This is a slide we're particularly proud of. These are our customers. These are people, companies, coast-to-coast and around the world, that have done business with Hillwood. If you look at this list ironically, in preparation for the meeting tonight, we went through our files and realized that 85% of these companies that are on this list, that are Hillwood customers, are based, or have some operation here in the Chicago area. So needless to say, the, the intent of our future development, both here in Lockport, as well as other areas of Chicago, are to satisfy real estate needs for these customers. Their day-to-day names that you know and that you hear, they're consumer products companies, they're retailers, they're food companies, they're companies that supply products to other companies. So these are the companies that have really driven our growth. There are relationships we have that we're very proud of, and they're companies that we believe, and certainly are, are confident, that will also be companies that will come to a project like we're proposing here in Lockport. You may also have heard about something called Alliance. A bit of our signature project is, is an Alliance development. We have an Alliance Texas and Alliance California, also an Alliance Florida. Alliance Texas is a 35,000-acre project. It has 25 or 30 million square feet of warehouse and distribution, but it also has small things like Texas Motor Speedway, and a FedEx hub, and a Burlington Northern Intermodal hub, and an airport. So again, we have the capability to do smaller kind of individual products, projects, much like we're doing here, and much like we're proposing. But we are capable, and financially capable, of handling projects that are literally in the billions of dollars. Again, why Hillwood? We have a long track record. We're proud of our success. We're proud of the relationships we have with our customers that I mentioned earlier. We have a good history of working closely with public entities. We view our relationships with municipalities as partnerships. We, we believe that we're contributing the dollars that it takes to create activities and developments in communities, and in return, that creates tax dollars, it creates jobs. So we think we're good partners. We, we have had very good experience around the country, and look forward to having that opportunity here. We have good market knowledge. We understand what needs to be built. Pam mentioned a little while ago, we fielded several questions from the Plan Commission a couple of weeks ago about the market. You know, the, the market for industrial product in Chicago has been dramatically improved. Three, four years ago, we saw vacancy rates in the 12 to 13% range. We are now somewhere between seven and eight. To give you a little bit of a perspective as well, in the first six months of the year, there were 5 million, or 12 million square feet, rather, of net new leases. So space that was taken off the market by companies like I showed you that leased space or bought space in Chicago. Conversely, in that first six months, there were only 5 million square feet of new space that was built. So you see very quickly, I think, that the demand for space is exceeding the construction and the supply, which is why here, as well as some other communities in the Chicago area, we're very optimistic about the ability in, in the future for success. We have several new projects going around Chicago. We can talk about theirs at some point, but our focus tonight is really this site. As Pam mentioned, even though this site does not fall into the master plan as currently proposed, we think, for a couple of reasons, it, it presents an interesting opportunity for us and for the community. It does really present a logical extension of the Pan and Tony development. We know the Pan and Tony folks very well. They're a very high-quality firm with good people. But we think it's a very logical match for us. It's very similar in product, very similar in size, slightly larger, but again, very similar kinds of interest in customers as well. This is, and Pam mentioned, this is a concept plan. And I don't know if she mentioned as well, but I also am a volunteer in our community. I, I get to sit up there. And so it's interesting for me to stand down here and try to talk about what I want to talk about tonight. But the, the purpose of that is to tell you, I'm interested in your feedback. I'm interested in your content. It is a concept plan. I think we've got a ways to go on some things we want to do. But I think we were very sensitive to, to a couple of things as we related, as related to the project. Number one is, we have talked to Pam and to Christiana about using the detention on the east side for a buffer for future development. That's important to us. We want to be good neighbors, not only in the community, but we want to be good neighbors to those that are to the east of us. So our intent is to create detention on the east side of the site, do some landscape screening on that site as well. We've also connected the east-side roadway down to 167th that will connect to the business park to the south. So we wanted to line that up, so there was some continuity there. And again, I think what you'll find is that the quality of the development, a little sense of kind of a mock-up, again, a concept plan of, of an entryway. Quality of the development we'll build will be really superior. We're proud of what we do and how we do it. But we're interested tonight in, A, having an opportunity to introduce us as a company and our plans for development here in, in Lockport, but also, B, to get your input, your feedback, answer questions you may have. We're very excited about the future of this development. We're very excited to be here. We're proud of what we do and how we do it. We think we're a very high-integrity firm. We do things the right way, and, and we keep our promises. So we're, we've had a really great relationship so far with staff. They've been very helpful to us as we've begun the process, and I'm interested tonight in welcoming your comments and your suggestions and your questions. So thank you.
I'll start. My, my, a couple of questions. First of all, it looks like you, your four buildings build out. Is that would be right away, four buildings, or stages?
No, alderman, I, I think the intent would be to start with one or possibly two. And then, again, a lot of the activity we would see that would result from that may or may not allow us to build something specific for a customer. If not, we would probably continue to build out something similar.
I guess the other thing was, I think, again, you had a lot of names there that we do business with. What are you looking for? Are you looking for a 24/7 operation at your place, or what kind of, what do you foresee, I guess is what I'm asking you as far as what kind of a-
You know, a lot of these operations are 24/7. There's no question. But to Pam's comment, a lot of these, these are distribution and logistics companies. They're not truck terminals. They're companies that supply products to retail stores. There's some companies that provide direct-to-consumer products. We, one of our biggest customers around the country is that big internet retailer that has a Prime service. Can't mention its name, but we would envision that kind of an operation here. Internet supplier, retail supplier, food-related company. I can't tell you if they would or wouldn't be 24/7. It would depend upon their operation and, and the kind of customer base they had.
So I think some of the things we would be concerned about, you know, for our building, of course, they would all be worked out later, but those are just some of the things off the top of my head I'm just thinking about out loud, so at least you kind of know what we're thinking about as far as that.
Yep, understand.
Pam, can I ask more? I, I mean, I've got a bunch of questions and, and concerns that we can talk about, but a little bit more of a procedural question, right? So they got the five to zero kind of vote of approval at planning and zoning. Kind of odd is, you read all these questions and concerns, then to get the five to zero, but that is what it is. But I almost don't under, I guess, explain to me that it's subject to the condition that uses that require significant truck, truck traffic would be prohibited. That's counterintuitive to me when I look at a 1.4 million square foot development with, I don't remember the exact number, 230-something truck stalls, right? I mean, I guess how does that play into reality, right? So conceptually, we could talk about that, but through the following stages, at what point and how do we actually put a limit that agrees with this? Or is this one of those things that kind of is said now and forgotten later?
Well, and that's a great point, because if you look even at the language in the comprehensive plan, in, in the, on the Pan and Tony designated site, it uses, it actually, on that one, it said it, that we should discourage large amounts of truck traffic. Again, what does that mean?
Yeah.
And then for this piece, it says, you know, warehouse distribution and other types uses that generate significant- And then for this piece, it says, you know, warehouse distribution and other types of uses that generate significant amounts of truck traffic. Again, what does that mean? It's all subjective. When the Plan Commission was having their discussion, the gist of the concern was they didn't want truck terminals. So double-loaded buildings, you know, with truck docks and, and terminal types of activities. So that's why even in the discussion, I kind of put in parentheses, truck terminals, because that would be, in my opinion professionally, a significant amount of truck traffic being generated, in, out, in, out, in, out. So I think when we start to discuss, if this moves forward and we start to discuss the annexation agreements, you know, we'll have to take a hard look at what we did in Panatoni, what we did in ML, what we did for Tandem. And, and, and I would imagine that those annexation agreements will be reflected very much in the annexation agreement that we would work out with Hillwood.
But, okay, fair enough. I, I still don't know that I heard the specific answer of like what the trigger is. But also, those previous developments aren't right next to existing residential and don't require annexation in. And violation isn't the right word, but aren't at least in some way against the master plan that we just got, what, a year and a half ago or so? So there's, I get it, right? I mean, I, I know that's what you guys want to do and I'm not, I'm not saying that we can't go that route, but I'm just trying to understand what we're even trying to define here as, as far as those things go.
And then also too, I mean, if twenty-four-hour operations are a concern, I mean, that is something also too, we can negotiate, you know, with, with, with the developer in terms of if that's something do we want to see happen or not? And I can't remember what we did in the other agreement. But, I mean, again, with the annexation process before us, you know, there's a, a lot of opportunities to really make sure that the language in there are tight enough to make everyone feel comfortable with any deviation from the, from, from the, from the comprehensive plan.
If I can to speak up. So I was at the planning and zoning meeting and, and one of the, the main concerns was we've got a lot of industrial being built right now. ML Realty's got a lot that's sitting there. It's unrented. We've got a lot of square footage that's there and they asked the petitioner, how to, how does he feel like he's, he can actually fill that up and do something better? Everyone's, everyone's kind of rushing to get their industrial up and get clients in and stuff. But so you, obviously, you know, we, we have to look at it and say, everyone's going into that race now in ten years when that market dies or something does change significantly where big-box warehouses are no longer there. How do we adapt them? How do we change them? Now do we got too many? Have an opportunity now saying that this was kind of the buffer between the residential, smaller business park, you know. One of the statements that was, was saying was that, you know, we can't, there is no market for the, the market, or there was no market for business park. So one of the things that I know I asked staff is just saying, you know, we, we should just get, slow this down for a second, get an independent market study to say, as, as we take a step back and look at the master plan and say, this says business park is what the intended use is. Do we have a good reason to not do a business park or allow somebody to say, we want to do something larger, more truck traffic and everything? Where somebody, and, and I know I told Ben, there's somebody smarter than I that created this, this community plan, this master plan. So we should try to at least follow that, honor it, because we did pay somebody for it and they're actually doing this. Just to ask the questions and say, can you please do an independent market study to say, can we, if, if there is no market at all for the business park? That we have something in our hands so that we can make the better decisions to say, okay, now that there isn't a market for that, now let's concentrate on these four buildings. What can we do with these four buildings to still make them a buffer to the residences to the, to east? And when you're saying, you know, it's a, it's a logical extension of Panatoni, it is. But there's, the argument is there's also a logical extension of the residences to the east, moving westward. So where do you draw that line? And this was, when you look at it, it's kind of like the buffer, smaller buildings, smaller heights, a little broken up, a little more car traffic instead of truck traffic. Those are things that I at least want to be able to bring to the board and be able to say, hey, here's our, what are our options? Is it market, truly market-driven? We've had a lot of people that have come up and said, the market says it's not going to support that and everything like that. But if we can have an independent market study to do that, you know, to figure that out, just so we can make a logical decision saying, we've got this master plan. Are we just throwing it out every time the petitioner comes in? And, or should we try to stick with it and say, you know, give us a really good reason why we shouldn't kind of follow that general idea there that's, that's, that's happening? And that's, I think you got a great product and of course for industrial and I know we can work through it and the buffer is, is great. I just want to say, let's, hold on a second. Let's see how this all plays out with your master plan, just to ask those questions first.
Can I address a couple of those comments, Alderman, if I can?
Please do.
You know, I think that the question in, in our mind, maybe in, in all of our minds, is what is a business park? And what does that entail? I heard you say, you know, a series of smaller buildings. This is a hundred-and-ten-acre site. If someone, us or someone else were to come in and do a series of smaller buildings, this product, this site wouldn't be viable. You wouldn't be able to get enough buildings up soon enough, quickly enough to counteract the carry and the costs associated with the development for the whole site. So when I think about a business park, I think of, as you maybe had offered, smaller buildings, twenties or thirties or forties that have twenty percent, thirty percent, fifty percent office. I, I don't think this site and the size of this site is viable for that kind of a, a development. The numbers don't work. Number two, I actually, I mentioned to Pam today that I have and I'll certainly bring it so you can review it. The market information that we rely upon is provided by real estate service companies that, that we all work with around the country. So we work with all of them. They, they have full-time research staffs. We look at all of their data. There's also kind of a national, almost multi-database kind of a system called CoStar that we also rely on. So before we start really engaging in a product like this or a project like this, we look at that market information and that market information has told us that for this location, for this kind of product, the size of buildings, the flexibility these buildings present, as well as the ability to divide these buildings into smaller tenants, which may result in higher levels of office finish and less warehouse, more office kinds of use. That's the flexibility that we're looking for here. But I did bring some material and I can give it to Pam and you can review it later. The office market per se is still tremendously stagnant for a couple of different reasons. Number one, how companies use office space today is very different than they did ten or fifteen years ago. Fifteen years ago, the average per-person office space around the country in an office building was between two-hundred-and-twenty-five and two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per person. Today, it's under a hundred-and-fifty. So that means, A, fewer people are actually in offices and, and require that kind of space. And number two, when they do, there's a smaller usage. So the, the days of having a three or four-hundred-square-foot private office for a lot of companies are, are gone. What we're seeing as well in products like this is more and more companies are actually bringing their office operations, their sales teams, their back-office operations, their finance and accounting teams into buildings like this. Because it allows them to interface with their logistics and supply chain operation and it quite candidly reduces their overhead. So I, I've got information. We can pass it out to you so you can review it at some point. But I, I would tell you, we looked at it and believe that the way we've laid out the site and the size of the buildings, the flexibility the buildings give, really is the only viable way to develop this site at this point. And if we had to go in and try to begin to develop smaller buildings with less warehouse space, I don't think it would be a viable site for us or candidly for anyone.
You think you would actually have that discussion with the person that created the master plan or that, that argument?
I'm, I'd be happy to, certainly. And I understand, again, having sat in your seat and continuing to sit in your seat, that the, what your goal is and what you want to accomplish.
Right. You're looking at this site and saying it's an extension. It's there. We have to look at the entire community and, and have that variety of bigger buildings, smaller buildings. So that if the economy does change and the big boxes start going away and people are starting doing smaller buildings, that we have some stock to hold our economy. And we don't have a lot of empty warehouse buildings up and down three-fifty-five, which we're getting a lot of. So, and then, you know, if this site was zoned that or planned that, I, I guess I would have no issue because again, somebody's planned for that.
I think the only question I would ask, and I'm not sure why and I don't have the answer, is why the business park to the south of one hundred and sixty-seventh hasn't been more successful? Because that's the kind of business park that I think you would envision for this kind of location. That's the, that's part of the comprehensive plan and the master plan. So my question, I don't know, I don't have an answer. There, there's probably a lot of reasons, but I think that may say to you that maybe there isn't demand for that kind of product in this location.
Absolutely. That is a very viable question as much as somebody brought up, bringing up, you know, we've got MI or ML Realities sitting vacant. We've got a lot of square footage there. That's, we've got Panatoni that's building. We've got Tandem.
That's kind of my, my question. Are you locked into a certain timeframe and do these decisions need to be made? Or do we have the luxury of seeing how these other developments turn out and see if we're not stuck with a bunch of empty buildings? Or if we see them filling up and saying, yes, this, this is working in this area, maybe we should consider adding some, you know, your development into it. I, I just, you just hate seeing more and more empty buildings. That's what you, that's what you have up in M&amp;L right now. And I just, it's hard to say, yes, well, let's bring you in when we don't know what's going to happen with the others. So I just kind of, are you, do you feel like you're locked into a timeframe or do you feel like this is something that could sit a couple of years and then said it still might work down the road?
Well, I, I guess I'd give you two answers to that. Number one is we have a contractual relationship with the landowner that does set forth a timeframe. And that timeframe does have kind of a sunset to it. And it isn't two or three years. It's much less than that. Number two, I think our intent and our interest in developing the site is really driven by what we believe to be very good market conditions. I know when, when you drive down three-fifty-five and you see ML's building there and you think, my gosh, there must be a thousand of these things sitting here. That is one of two buildings above half a million square feet in the entire Chicago market. So again, the perception, and I understand that because I, I drove down there tonight and I thought, boy, I'd hate to have that building sitting there. But the perception that there are a lot of those buildings out there is, is not the case because there are only two buildings above half a million square feet in the entire Chicago metro market for customers that need bigger space.
We're not saying that they're out there. We're saying they're all here.
You've got one.
That's our concern.
You've got one and John Nook's got another.
And I guess my comment is, you know, I, I know that you wouldn't be here proposing this if you didn't foresee a, a use for it. But I mean, are, are you, are you projecting it based upon, and I know you mentioned CoStar and a few other independent market studies that are out there or whatever you look at? Or do you actually have clients that you represent that are, that are looking to you saying, you know, we need space in this area and this is what we need it for?
We, we have customers, Mr. Mayor, as well as brokers who do business with us, who are saying, we have customers that want to be in this location. So I'm, while I'm, I'm certainly willing to be patient, I think the market conditions, we feel so strongly, are so good right now. Certainly, as you all know, we're seeing historically low interest rates and we're seeing demand from customers who quite candidly, corporations today have been very cautious until just recently about leasing space. And we're now beginning to see, and as I mentioned, that twelve million square feet of leased space versus five million square feet of built space. I think that says exactly what I'm saying tonight, which is there's demand out there and there really isn't as much space as there should be or could be or needs to be.
And if I can also just add something, you know, we, we talk about, well, you know, we have this business park currently and there's nothing, you know, there's buildings built, but there's no one occupying them and then we have more industrial coming online. Something else that staff gets to have discussions with applicants about that you don't necessarily get to have, is, is it also depends on how that particular developer is marketing his, his or her property. If there is a willingness to, you know, divide the buildings or sell the buildings, you know, that has a significant impact on how fast and how quick a particular business park may move compared to another. Because I know from my experience, and I worked in Bolingbrook during the height of the industrial period, you know, you had some tenants that they were adamant, they wanted to own their building. Well, if they're looking at an industrial park and that developer is saying, no, I don't sell, I only lease, well, they go on to the next one. So depending upon what each of the end users' requirements are, you know, is also going to determine how quickly, you know, that business park. So if there's more flexibility on the developer willing to sell the building or divide the building to be able to accommodate the needs of the user, that park is going to develop quickly and it's going to fill up quickly.
I'm glad you said that because I couldn't say that.
We know it's all put together, right?
Yeah, but, but I, but I would say, just as a follow-up to your comment, Pam, our capital is our capital. We have, we have a hundred percent control and a hundred percent discretion on the capital that we use to build these buildings. Not everyone in this market does. And so to Pam's comment, that means we have a lot of flexibility in how we respond, how we do business with the customers, whether we can sell, whether we do divide, how quickly we can get something up. And we're not, we don't need to go back to our capital partners and say, hey, can we do this? Because very often when that happens, you miss opportunities.
I have a couple of comments. I like this, you know, from, from my standpoint of what I perceive as a definition of an office business park slash industrial. In my mind, they're all exactly the same. And so, and I see some of the end users, users that you have here, but I'm going to need Brian's help on this a little bit. My recollection of this piece of property back when McNorton owned it, okay? I believe that the original and, uh, concept plan, could even have been a preliminary plan at that time, was that it was office. And this was pre-recession. This is when the sky was the limit and people were building stuff. And it never went because of that concept, this whole office concept, to which he then came with a, with a, a gated community type of a thing, if I recall correctly.
Not a hundred percent, but you could be on track as far as the office.
Yeah. So we went from, we went office. That wasn't, that wasn't going to work. Then we got into right around recession time and, okay, well, we can't build this type of building, so we're going to try to go with, then we're going to try to go with this, this gated community type of, senior type of housing. That was passed and then what happened was, um, they basically went belly up because of the changing dynamics of the market. I like, I like this, 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 um, development because it also would go ahead and solve an issue that you kind of brought up with was the, uh, the south of Division Street, one hundred and sixty-seventh street, which was our business park there, our office park there. It was always, well, how are we going to go ahead and have trucks get to that point? Well, this development solves that issue by, by, by connecting one hundred and sixty-third with one hundred and sixty-seventh right at Prime Boulevard. And then it takes that truck traffic, which would be a significant issue with the residential down at one hundred and sixty-seventh and Gauger, it removes that, that, that entire issue right there, okay? That's just my point. You know, my, that's my thought process, the whole thing. So I, I'm, I'm going to be really interested in seeing, you know, um, a preliminary plan. I'd be far more interested to know who the fifteen or so end users are, um, which you're not going to give us. But that's, that's just the way I look at it. I, I just, I just, I just don't have this aversion to trucks because some people could go ahead and define a significant amount of trucks as one. And many do go ahead and use that significant, that, that definition. We have to understand is, is that we are in the right smack in the middle of an interstate system. Two interstate systems, one goes east and west, another one goes northwest and southwest. And there isn't any other spot in the United States where we have this central location, central location, which is about equidistant of six miles either side of I-80 and three-fifty, I mean, I-55. Which, which tells me, which is, it's a whole lot better than C, than Romeoville because they're on fifty-five. And, um, it's a whole lot better than New Lennox because they're just on I-80. So, um, I'm, 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 I like this and I'm in support of the, the concept plan as, as presented.
Pam, can I ask another question? Actually, Darren's comment kind of, I didn't think of it. Maybe this is just my lack of judgment or knowledge. I saw the road. I don't have it right in front of me, but there's kind of, you know, like the four normal intersections, basically two north-south roads, right? And then there was one road that kind of went southeast pretty much to connect to Prime Boulevard, right? Is the design, yeah, exactly. So is that intent that the, that the trucks, they're getting off three-fifty-five, go east on fifty-nine, uh, one hundred and fifty-ninth, south on Gauger? My thought was they'd keep going to Division Street and then come, come over for the most part, especially the ones at the Prime Boulevard. The truck traffic, even the potential Prime Boulevard now kind of routes through this road? Because I think that's what I heard Darren say.
Well, the, the, both, both versions of. Well, the, the, both, both versions of the master plan call for some sort of connection. That goes from Hundred sixty-third to Hundred sixty-seventh. And I think the intent was always that it did have some alignment with, with Prime Boulevard.
This is not the first time we have seen, seen a development with this type of alignment.
Right, so, I mean, the, and, and again, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, I think the access is the one thing that we really have to sit down with them and kind of sort out. Because again, even though that road does run north-south the way, you know, it was encouraged in the comprehensive plan, at the same time, how their development gets their truck traffic and car traffic and relates to it. I think that's internally, we got to just look at that a little more, just to make sure that it does make sense, that there's not too many access points in and out of that. And, and that it can function as the, the comp plan is calling for, which is another kind of connector route. Did that answer your question? I mean, it's hard to say because, I mean, obviously, if, with the first two buildings, I mean, any people that would be coming there were going to use Hundred sixty-third.
Yep.
You know, as the, you know, last building, you know, gets developed, it may be more logical and easier for people to enter in off of Hundred sixty-seventh Street. I mean, it just, you know, it's just however people's natural ability to get from point A to point B.
What this also does here is, is a completely different project here is with this, with this, the Kate Farm Road Bridge, Kate Farm, Bruce Road Bridge, or whatever alignment that's going to be. You know, I, I, I want, I want them to terminate, terminate this, this, this strategic route arterial at, at Bruce Road, okay?
In three fifty-five.
In three fifty-five, okay? Well, if we would have to go just a little bit further east and have a connection coming off, coming west and go through, go through this, go through this and, and move the, move the, the footprint of, that goes between Prime Boulevard and Cedar Ridge down to Prime Boulevard. Okay, now what we have here is, is we now we have a truck route that is coming off of, coming off of, coming over the bridge, terminating somewhere right near three fifty-five and Bruce, and Bruce Road right around there. And then coming straight north and then everything's kind of connected that way. And then with that, and by doing that, then it moves, that takes out the Gallagher Road probability of trucks going from south to north to connect that way.
Darren, you're, you're bringing up all the points that are, are valid because it is all the future points. And part of those that I, that you're worried about that one, the other one I'm worried about is the residential zone to the east. And making sure that how that buffer, you know, again, we're going from forty-foot warehouses down to thirty, twenty-foot, something a little bit more broken up next to houses.
What we also know is if, if this goes in first and every person who would go ahead and purchase a house in that residential area knows exactly what they're going to be purchasing.
Oh, absolutely. What I'm afraid of is this same slippery point where
You still want to be desirable area for that as well.
It's slippery point saying, well, there's industrial there, the logical extension is forget the residential, let's make it warehouse. And those are, and, these are all great discussion. I just, I think there's a lot more information that we should bring to the board to talk about this real quick before, and even have Steve involved, the mayor, and have that discussion so we can, you know.
Well, I would like, I would like to go ahead and, and pass the concept plan so we can actually get to the big potatoes with the board.
We're not doing that tonight.
Yeah, I'd like at least bring it to the next committee of the hall so that Steve can be here, we can have, have an open, you know, discussion.
You know, just, just kind of looking real quick at this, I got the exploded view of this. I see there's a, just a mobile pipeline on the property. Sounds with that, you're kind of locked in the way it's designed, am I kind of leaning now that I see that?
Yeah, and that's why, you know, it was illogical, Alderman, based upon the location of the pipeline and allow the buffer to put the detention on the east side. I, I think, again, to, to someone's point, this is a very preliminary concept plan. And we're willing to roll up our sleeves and say, yeah, let's try to figure out if the detention works that way, if it's multiple ponds. There's some grade change there from the north to the south. We may, we may have multiple ponds, but I think
I'm looking at that too earlier, knowing that, reading in the notes, there was some creek issues there. So I kind of think, oh, that's all going to work out, you know, I'm just kind of thinking in my mind, how are they going to, you know, do that? Because if there's homes there, is that all going to drain? But now that I see the, the existing pipeline, you're kind of locked in for design.
We really are.
We have it pretty much, seems like it, but.
And, and to Alderman's point there, you know, we're, we've spent a reasonable amount of money getting to the point we are today. I think we're looking for, for council's direction on whether or not conceptually this works as a use. Because if it, if that's the message we hear, then we're prepared to start spending a lot of money. And really digging in with staff and council and looking at how to make this work. So that's kind of where we are.
That's, that's why I was asking not to bring it to vote, so I don't want him spending more money until we really talk about it here.
Well, vote wouldn't happen tonight, no matter what, but yeah.
I just, I'd just like to make a comment, you know, we have to keep in mind, okay, that this is, it's a concept that they've chosen or basically they decided to build here, you guys. We are just coming out of a terrible, terrible market. And I'm glad to see that the properties that Lockport is involved with and owns, that people are interested in, in building. Now, grant you, would we have liked to see other things, you know, being built, absolutely. But I'm happy to hear that you have tenants already that are interested in these buildings. And that's the key, you guys, that in fact, we, you know, this company has people already lined up and is going to just be a benefit in the long run. I, I know that, you know, just the thought of empty buildings or whatever, let's not look at it that way. Let's look at it, these are going to be occupied buildings. We're not going to have just standing empty buildings. Just keep in mind what we're coming out of. And I think that'll guide us to all the questions and answers that we're going to have in the future here. I agree, there's still a lot of questions that have to be asked and, and answered. But this is a, a good concept. They're interested in our properties. Let's move forward with, you know, with the idea that they have. Let's see if we can all come to a happy medium and just look for the future. Because this is going to attract other commercial in our village and city.
I, I have one, one question, it's kind of like what Pam talked about. We've heard from ML Realties that they have absolutely no interest in ever selling, which is maybe part of the reason why, they just want to lease. Your product, is it a lease only? Is it, do people have the ability to purchase or yes, yes?
They do, yeah.
The, the answer is whatever works, Alderman. I mean, again, that's why our cap, we have a hundred percent discretion over our capital. Some of our competitors don't. So our competitors' capital requires them to hold it for a certain period of time or not sell it at all. You know, our, our intent is to, to satisfy real estate problems. And sometimes that means leasing, sometimes that means selling, sometimes that could mean joint ventures. We have customers also that come to us and say, you know, we're not sure we want to lease, we're not sure we want to buy, couldn't we do it together? And they throw capital in with us and we do it together in a joint venture. So that's, we think what makes us a little bit different.
The flexibility is great, yeah. You need to, you need to be flexible in this time of, you know, of our market and that's great.
We, we learned that lesson a few years ago.
Okay, staff is requesting that we put it over at a city council meeting, are we comfortable doing that or do we want another committee of the hall?
Mayor Potom, I apologize, I had to step out, so I'm not sure what was all covered. I, I guess I could make a few comments maybe before you make that decision. You know, I'm in concurrence with staff that this concept plan is in appropriate use in this location. I understand that the master plan had discussed some other office uses. You know, you take a look from a high level and, and look at, you've got an office park just south of that that has not done well in the last ten years. So I don't know if, you know, having them propose more of the similar use of that would be appropriate. I mean, they've showed reports that they feel confident that they can be successful at what they do in this location with this use. And yes, there is some residential propos, or residential zoning already approved east of there. However, you know, they haven't been built yet, they can do some birmingham. This proposed detention center is a very nice buffer between any potential residential with, with the residential developer doing some additional screening with landscaping. I think they can have that transition be reasonable. And, you know, they've produced a myriad of, of companies that they work with. Obviously, when these companies get together and they are speculative, that's not, that's why they're not building four buildings at once. You know, you do this over time and with growth. And it's what's hot right now. Obviously, everyone's taking advantage of this type of use and the market is coming back. And this is an unannexed piece of property, so we're going to gain quite a bit in, you know, taxes and fees. So it seems like a good growth. I understand Alderman and Patrakos' concerns, we talked on the phone today at length. And I just feel like it's a good use. But yes, staff is deferring to the council in regards to our next steps with this concept plan.
Real quick, just to answer Alderman Bartolson's question, do or do not have people lined up as day one to open?
We have interested prospects, I don't have anybody to step in today because I don't even know if I can build it yet.
I remember you saying you only had, were building one building and then I was like, wait, do I know something I don't know, like?
No, 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 it, just what he had said, you know, there, he, I can see that there's already interest. That's the type of company they are. They would not be even considering something like this unless they had interested parties already ready to go. Or, you know, make a commitment at the time when the time is right. Like he said, this is just the beginning stage, so they're not going to get any committed, you know, merchants, you know, to make a, you know, a definite decision.
I know there's a lot of misinformation out there when you look at a lot of these proposed projects. You know, people see truck centers and, you know, these are not necessarily truck centers. And there is a momentum in the market today that we've seen all over Chicagoland where you build these larger buildings, but they have multiple tenants inside. We've discussed with many other developers, the need where clients are looking to consolidate their headquarters and their distribution. And one point, we're getting a lot more jobs in these buildings than they used to five and ten years ago. So that's another reason the daytime numbers will increase. And I think it's an appropriate use, pretty much on the backs of the Panatoni develop being approved, that it makes a lot of sense that they could share that one entryway and have a similar use. And if you get the, the proposed detention and buffers with the potential new residential later, that'll be enough of a screen there to accommodate the use.
And just to give you a sense, we are so confident in the market, within three weeks, four weeks, we'll have four projects for one point three million square feet under construction.
Where, where will those be if you
Building in Joliet, two buildings in Romeo Ville and a building in Elgin.
So I, I, I don't know when we, when we kind of get, finally get through this, but, you know, I, I think Jim and I are on the same page on a lot of these things, it's, it sounds like. You know, of course, they're, they're hopeful that there's interest in these buildings, right? They wouldn't be doing this if they didn't think that and, and, you know, developers know development much more than I do. But we're putting the cart before the horse if we say they've got interested parties or, or anything close to that. And while I do agree, it's been obvious to us with the developers that have come through, that, that we're an area that they're looking at for these types of, of buildings. So again, developers smarter on development than I am, it's, it's got to be a good market. That being said, you know, this is more to join, but just in general, our job is also, that may be the case, but our job is really to protect the residents as well. And, and we do need to make sure, and, you know, we've got ML, we've got Panatoni, we've got Tandem, you know, you've got another million dollars within, outside of Elgin, within twenty minutes of here. At some point, there's a saturation point. And maybe that's not in the next year, two years, three years, five years, maybe it's fifteen, twenty, I don't know what it is. So it gives me pause, right? That being said, I'm not outright against it. But as we're moving along, you know, some of the things we talked about, I, I hope, you know, as plans become more firm, that we, that we figure those out. Obviously, I'm going to look for as much buffer and, and make it as, as positive as we can to the east side. Darren, you're right, anybody who moves next to it in a residential area knows what they're getting into. But it's still an area that, you know, should be or possibly will be developed. We want to make it as, as appealing of, of an area as possible, right? So whether people move there or not, the, the better that area is, you know, the, the more, you know, the easier it is to build there, the better it is for us in the long run. You know, Ben, I've heard two or three times now, not just tonight, but in different times of, well, this would be annexing into Lockport and that's a positive for us. That's true, but this property, if it ever develops, really has to annex into Lockport, right? We're, we're not, we're not tied to one developer.
It's more of a timing thing. And one of the things I did hear was something about, well, does it stop here? We have family zoning east of that and do, do we now just want to make that commercial? And I, I think that's a stronger leap than we would ever make a recommendation for. And I'm very confident that that's not a transition you're going to see beyond this.
What I really knew was going to happen was residential developers going to come here in six months. And says, look, I've got all these jobs, we'll have all these jobs within sixty seconds of our house. And I want to go ahead and put a residential development in the area that's zoned residential. I'm not going to be in favor of anybody wanting to change zoning, you know, in, in the residential.
Guys, I totally understand. Remember Sage Brook before that was Warehouse. We had to, as a resident, I had to sit there and say, why are we going from residential? It was zoned residential and everyone was talking about Warehouse. I think there's our bigger discussions we got to have. That's all I'm saying is that there's, I think there's more information because as a council, we can change anything. I think we just have to look at the master plan and say, are, is this worth changing the master plan? Or what the, the initial plan is for our entire community? We have to have a
See, in my opinion, this falls in the master plan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't read the master plan that way, the language in it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not totally opposing, right?
I think we had a good discussion.
I guess that's the question, is this land, how was it originally proposed as? I, I guess that's the knowledge I think we need to have a little bit more of.
Master plan is
Yes, I mean the oh-eight version or the
Pre-master plan was, was, was the McNorton office building
No, master plan is office.
But we've had two versions of master plans since then.
The pre-master, three
We could say it was always supposed to be farm back in eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
If I could just say a couple things. Well, remember, we have the master plans that are called the I three fifty-five master plan. Well, before there was the I three fifty-five, you know, there was a different comprehensive plan that kind of covered that. I do not know what the land use was. But something I just wanted to say is with the start of construction with Pan and Tony, there has been interest now in that area for that entitled residential development to the north. I've gotten several calls on that. When I have the conversation with the person, because they have clients that are looking for multifamily developments as well as single-family developments, and I let them know that there's another entitled piece just to the other side of this unincorporated piece and that we're currently working with, you know, an applicant that potentially could bring that property in and extend the utilities, that area by virtue of what they're doing with extending the utilities and making them closer to those single family, are going to encourage that area to be an area of growth. If we stick to the true intent of, you know, small buildings, office-type concept, and that property never gets developed for a really long time, that means that that entitled residential to the east is going to be a bigger burden cost-wise for anyone who wants to develop it. Because they're going to have to bring those utilities through that property, enter and to recapture, you know, that. So, and again, it's, it's just the ability to spur not only more industrial development, but also more residential development for property that has been sitting entitled for many years now. So in that area, I really project that area as being the next big growth area with the addition of these types of developments.
One of the other things we've seen, and it's entirely about balance, so I, I agree with you that, you know, we don't want to have too many of one thing. We are talking to all the developers about property that's north and west of here. And they're proposing some similar things, but yet in that location, it's more appropriate where they want to bring in retail with it as well. So there's going to be a more of a mixed use in that development. So, you know, we do rely on the developers doing a lot of their homework and what they feel they can actually be successful at in these individual areas. And then we also give feedback and from what we talk with individual Alderman on our own time and staff time, and relay those kind of messaging back. And we do feel there's a great message in Lockport right now. We are pro-business, we are growing, we are getting balanced, we're getting single-family, we're getting industrial. And, you know, this is a, this is a good opportunity for us to take this momentum and fill out some of these unannexed areas and continue to grow our opportunities.
I think we had a good conversation. Are we comfortable with the city council or do we need another committee of the hall?
I would say another committee of the hall, for me, for Steve to be here, the mayor to be here also.
I actually, you know, this is, this is concept, right? I'm at the point where I would go ahead, I'm willing to go forward at concept plan, but just knowing there are some things that I want to see worked out well. And, and this is normal course, right? There's always things we want to see worked out. But I am, you know, truck thing, at least define it. And if it's gonna be unlimited trucks for 24 hours, at least let's make that the definition, right? I'm, I'm not proposing that. But, you know, whatever it is, let's define it, let's figure out where we need to go. But I think I'm at the point where I'm, nothing's gonna change in the concept plan, right? That would make me say we probably can't at least proceed forward, but it's a, you know, it's a cautious procedure to make sure that we, you know, the preliminary looks okay from my standpoint.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we go ahead and do that then?
Okay. I, I'm, I'm fine with that. Can, can I ask that we just get, can you do a study on that this doesn't, won't allow a business park? Or it's not a, there's a, you have that also, is it a business park?
Yeah, I, Alderman, I, actually, I provided some information about the, the components. If, if the component of the business park that, that, the concept of a business park is that of a higher office component, the, the needs for office, the demand for office, and the vacancy, you talk about vacancy of industrial, vacancy of office space in metropolitan Chicago, up and down all the submarkets ranges from 17 to 21 percent. So there's really no demand and no one's building new office space outside of the city of Chicago.
I understand. There's the selling part and then there's the community as a whole, what makes sense.
Understand.
What we have as a whole, we have X amount of warehouse, X amount of residence, X amount of everything. So I don't want to ruin the residential on the side for anything that we're doing here. Because everyone's always said, we want more retail, we need rooftops, we don't want to, you know, just want more information. They're gonna scan it and send it out to everybody.
We'll do both, but there's hard copies for everyone as well.
All right, we'll add on for an action item then for next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that brings us to you, Mr. City Administrator.
No, that's still me.
It's a little shared, yeah. She's on a roll.
Okay, the first part of it is really, if the council recalls, not too long ago, I sent you out recommendations that were provided by the Retail Coach addressing some economic development strategies. And one of the key recommendations included taking action to address the premise that community development precedes economic development. And what this comprises is community appearance, pride of ownership, functional infrastructure, evidence of crime, code and codes enforcement, and downtown vitality. When staff and the mayor and Ben, when we all went to ICSE this past May, which was the big recon event, we were advised that potential retailers, restaurants, hotels, developers, et cetera, could be driving through Lockport at any given time. And we were also told that the first impressions that a community makes are very important to these retailers and these developers and their decision to pursue opportunities that might be available in a particular community. In May, as everyone recalls, the mayor instituted council liaisons. And one of the areas that, that he appointed Councilman or Alderwoman Bartleson to was code compliance or enforcement. And so it's important because again, this addresses the whole, what is the community appearance? And what is the message that the city of Lockport is conveying to its visitors or potential businesses? After the appointments, Alderwoman Bartleson, myself, and Tom Fulton, we did a tour of the commercial corridors, the, the high-profile ones right now, which predominantly is 159th Street. And we also looked at the shopping centers in the city. And we identified certain areas that, that truly we needed, we need to address. And those include the condition of existing landscaped areas, parking lots, and signage. And so this evening, what, what we're bringing for you, bringing before you is some code amendments that will help to strengthen and tighten up our code enforcement initiatives. And the first is the landscape maintenance. Currently, in our development code, we only, we address some semblance of landscaping maintenance. However, it's not detailed enough to really give the teeth that we need in driving home the point that people need to take care of landscaping and defining what that means. So in the report this evening, I identified the section in the development code and the existing language and how it relates to landscape maintenance. And essentially, what it doesn't specifically discuss is the replacement of missing plant material, mulch, and/or the removal of weeds. And even though we have other sections in different codes that address weeds, we want it to be real clear to property owners, property managers, tenants, that, you know, it doesn't mean just cutting the tall grass or the weeds, but it also means taking a look at the overall picture of that site and making it so that it looks neat and orderly and clean and inviting. So the proposal that we're making is that the language be such that it advises the owner, tenant, and/or their agent that they're responsible for the maintenance of all landscaping and that this includes components which comprise landscaping, such as plant material, planting beds, mulch, located on the site as required by the provisions of the zoning ordinance or of the development code. "Landscaping shall be maintained in good condition so as to present a healthy, neat, and orderly appearance and shall be kept free from refuge and debris." In addition to that, we identify that missing or dead plant material or diseased needs to be replaced. Now, some plant material, depending upon the time of year and the type of species, you know, you may be able to replace immediately. There may be certain other times of the year that are better than the immediate, you know, identification of the problem. Identifying that all planting beds shall be kept free of weeds in areas of the planting bed that don't complain, contain plant material, that the ground cover and mulch shall be, you know, kept up. We drive through some of the centers now and clearly, some of those planting beds, aside from not being free of weeds, they're also free of mulch, which at one point in time was there. We're also saying that what we'll do is we will advise an owner or tenant or their agent that after 10 days of receiving written notice, they need to contact us and give us their plan for addressing the issues that have been identified. Now, this text amendment does not require a public hearing. So after tonight's meeting, if the council so chooses, we can go ahead and put that on for action item at the next council meeting. The other area that we took a look at was off-street parking and loading areas. Those are addressed in the zoning ordinance. Any changes to that language will require a public hearing. Staff is scheduling the proposed amendment for the September 8th Plan Commission meeting, which means that it'll come before you, oh no, I'm sorry, we'll be putting it on for September and then it'll be coming to you for committee of the whole discussion in mid-September. But the things that we found in parking lots were potholes, lots of those, lack of seal coating, parking lot striping had worn away, now you can no longer see what those spaces were, damaged and missing traffic control signage, and in some instances, rusty light poles. And again, somebody driving through the community or stopping at one of our shopping centers for a bite to eat or the post office or whatever, if they're seeing these types of things, it, it creates an appearance that we don't care. And what we want to do is create the environment that shows people coming through our town and hoping to locate in our town, that it's a place that they want to be because we take care of our properties. The last item has to do with the sign ordinance. That is found in the municipal code. And similar to the section on landscaping, this does not require a public hearing. So as, if we move forward with this one, this one too, can be action taken at the next council meeting. Currently, the municipal code only addresses the removal of signs. It does not obligate the property owner to maintain the signs. It does not obligate them to, you know, when the tenant moves out and they do take the panel out to put some kind of panel in, and, and you can drive through the town and you can see examples of, of what I'm talking about. In addition to that, in some instances for wall signage, where the walls signage has been removed, there's still holes in the walls or discoloration on the building. Again, these are things that you would think that you shouldn't have to clearly identify as issues to be addressed. But again, we just want to make sure that as we revise these texts, and make these text amendments, that it's real clear what we're looking for and that people then, and then our code enforcement officer will have more leverage and more teeth to, to get compliance and get these issues taken care of. So what we're proposing with, with the signs is that we're kind of modifying the removal of the certain sign section. And basically, if there's no longer a business in that center that's operating, their signage needs to be removed, both on the building and both on the freestanding sign, if any. And similarly, it must be removed, preferably within 10 days after receiving written notification of the city. If the sign is located on the wall, then it will need to be removed as well and the wall will need to be restored to its original condition. If it's a freestanding sign, no longer will we accept panels that are turned backwards or panels that aren't replaced at all, but it will need to be an opaque panel where you're not seeing the inside components of that sign. In addition to that, when we go into sign maintenance, again, it needs to be readable. If it's illuminated, the lighting needs to be functional. The structures need to be free of dust or rust or discoloration. And again, they too will have 10 days from notification, you know, to address, address the issue. Also, things that we have talked about is that we would like to inform and notify commercial property owners of the need to present this positive community image. And I believe in your packets, you also have received a draft reminder letter that has been generated and we would hope to be signed by the mayor that basically lets the commercial property owners know that, hey, you know, this is the concern, this is the issue, we need to work together. For those of you who are doing it, thanks, great, keep up the good work. For those of you who aren't, you know, please reach out to staff, we're happy to work with you. You know, we want to make this community and, and the first impression to be one of, of positive. So with that being said, if the council is, feels comfortable, you know, we would be seeking direction to place the amendment to the signs and the amendment to the landscaping at the next city council agenda on the 19th for action.
I'd just like to just elaborate just a little bit. This is really a big concern in our, in our town. Some of these old signs that were taken down and perhaps new signs were up. They never bothered in taking care of the holes and, and the spikes that were holding the signs together. So this is so important that we tighten up these codes for these commercial businesses. It just, it's going, I think it's going to help them understand where, you know, the city is coming from, that we need their participation in making sure that they clean up and, and make things look nice and tidy and, you know, with the explanation that, you know, we are now getting people driving through that is, you know, quite concerned that if the buildings aren't looking kept up, that they may have a whole different impression on our, you know, on our town. So I, you know, I'd like to, you know, encourage council to please, you know, go move forward to accepting these changes and, you know, so we can start tightening up the program.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea and, and something that you see in a lot of other towns as well. My only comment is that I, I think that the proposed language falls short of what we do after the 10-day notice. It doesn't say what we're gonna do. Are we going to find them? Or are we going to authorize the city to do the repairs on their behalf and then bill the owner the cost that, that we incurred? What are we doing after 10 days?
Well, similar to when other code enforcement, code issues are identified, I mean, there's a process. I mean, you have the code, which you cite that they're in violation of or not. And, and I would have to, I'm not involved with, with that part of the process. That's Tom Fulton with our police department and our code enforcement officer. But my understanding is, you know, there, it's kind of like a three-letter process. You know, the first step is, hey, we've, we've identified these issues, they need to be taken care of by a certain period of time. We do have the authority to find if issues are not taken care of. The find structure or finding structure is listed in, in the municipal code. And from my understanding is that you do kind of have to reference that in the letter to give people, you know, notice of that. And then obviously, you know, if it's not taken care of in a timely enough manner, I don't know if another letter is sent or if the next letter that's sent actually includes like a citation or violation notice. And then that would start the whole, you know, having to go to court. Now, just because we have these tightened, you know, code amendments, doesn't mean we're gonna get, you know, compliance every time we notify people of these issues. And you'll get some that will, you know, immediately address the issue and will move on from there. And then you will get chronic violators or people who, no matter how much you threaten or what you say you're going to do, you ultimately have to take them to court. What we're hoping is that through establishing, you know, good relationships with, with the property owners and kind of creating an educational purpose with them, letting them know, you know, as we move forward, that these code amendments are coming and what the expectation is that perhaps we'll get less pushback and we'll get more cooperation at the end of the day. Will it be a little bit of a struggle? Absolutely. Because at this point in time, you know, we don't have these code amendments in place. And therefore, you know, it's, it's a very arbitrary in terms of, well, what does this mean? And how should it be taken care of? Now, we're identifying, these are the issues, when we identify them, these are the things that have to be taken care of. And some of them will be very costly and some will be easy fixes. And hopefully, many of them will already be on their list of things to take care of as part of their operations and, you know, yearly maintenance. But it, it's gonna be an educational process and we're gonna need to make sure that we follow the same protocol. And if the protocol to get the results needs to be looked at in amendment or amended, that is something too, that, you know, we'll have to work with Tom on in tightening up the process as well, if that's necessary.
We can certainly, you know, make contact with Tom Fulton, our code enforcement, just to see what is that next step, how to, there might be language already there that we're not quite aware of. So, you know, we definitely will check into that and have that answered, you know.
Yeah, I'd just like to see what, what we're gonna do.
You know, it's, it's, we could say we're gonna go ahead and send you a letter, but it doesn't say, and if you don't comply, you get a $1,000 fine.
Well, it may, there may be some kind of language like that.
If it's a $25 fine and I've got $1,000 or $2,000 worth of work, not a big deal.
Right.
Well, but the finding structure is typically based on, it's not just, it's just not a one-time. I mean, the way the code is written is every day is a new offense. So you can even, in, in, in other communities I worked for when I was involved with it, I mean, you know, you can even, you know, go as far as to say, you know, you could conceivably be fined from the day that you are notified. And so it's not only you got the 10 days to take care of it, but we could conceivably go back and, and, and get them for the days, you know, prior to that. It's just, again, it's just a matter of, you know, it's the, it's the personality of that property owner or that management company and, and what is priority. But yes, we will get, I'll talk to Tom and see if we can't maybe get some examples of the letters when he follows the process, what each of the letters looks like as it goes through.
I think this is great and I'm all for, you know, consent agenda, but I would like to see the next, the next part of the text amendment that comes after this, which is, and thou shalt be fined.
And I don't think, you know, as long as we're doing it, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to at least reserve the city the right to, to do the repairs and bill the owner. Because if it's something that's a real concern for the city and, you know, pursuant to the ordinance, our, our only remedy is to find the person and bring him to court.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we, we actually kind of perform that now and, yeah. Ryan's one of our favorite aldermen to help us, you know, you know, identify these things in the town. And sometimes when we go out and send compliance notes and we don't get it, sometimes we, we feel we have to send our crews out to handle this and then we actually send a bill back to them for our time.
Because ultimately, the last sentence is gonna be, we'll pay some places lean on your property. Just that's exactly what our...
And that's what we'll check, check out to make sure that that language is there. If not, we should probably consider putting it in.
Yeah, and this cleans up some of the authority to do this. You know, certainly with some of the law changes more recently, that we're able to get funds through the state and people's returns if they don't pay the city the money they owe. So we want to make sure that all this is lined up and, and accurate, so that when we do that, there's no, there's no question.
You've been around for a long time for this to be the first thing you like. You've been around for a long time for this to be the first thing you like.
He had brown hair.
We were, we were a long overdue for something like this. And I know it's just a start, but there's a lot of tweaking that can be done in this. I think as we go, there's things we can add, maybe tighten up a little more. And we, and we do that as we go along with some things. So again, I, I seen ten days down here, again, I think that's a guideline. I do work with all these businesses and people, I think that's what we usually do anyway. So that's not really a concern, the ten days, but this was a great thing to happen. Again, you already said working, this gives us teeth to go to, to, uh, implement things, you know, the way it's written. Um, Joanne, I appreciate all your work in this and our city staff bringing this forward, this is spot on, this is great stuff. Um, so again, I, I know there was, uh, some, some discussion on, you know, if it doesn't, if the people won't do it, hey, they'll pay the twenty-five dollar fine. So again, I, I know what that's all about. The, the grass has kind of even gone there, and I'm kind of worried about the grass if the city are cutting. And, and again, our expense, it may be fifty dollars when I'm saying to cut it, but that's relatively small maybe compared to some of these things that may be preparing. So I, I don't know, that's a hell of a worry. So again, it's all real work and labor moving forward. It's, um, uh, it's, it's really good stuff. Um, I, again, this not only affects, to me, uh, we're supporting our businesses by this because the business next door could look exactly like what we're talking about here. So we're helping our business and we're also helping our community too. I mean, the first impression, I mean, we are addressing some of the first impressions that goes on in the city that's written here. So again, man, this is great stuff.
One of the things, Joanne and I and Pam met on this, um, more recently. And one of the other things we talked about that I wanted to share was, we're also, we need to kind of bring our own house in order too. Cause the city owns property and lots in town that maybe aren't getting the attention they need too. So we want to make sure that we are going to do that as well. That if we're asking the businesses and the residents to help us and we're trying to step up our efforts to clean up the community, um, you know, we're going to try to do, uh, um, one of the ideas Joanne had was about all these entryways and rightaways that are kind of overgrown. And, um, we had to slow her down a little bit to say, well, some of those are I dot rightaway, some of those are city, some of those are private. Let us do a quick study to figure out whose rightaway is where and what we can send our crews to. Uh, we may ultimately end up, um, contracting that out more likely because our crews need to be working on EAB and other things that are important in the community too. But, um, certainly when there's a, uh, growth that blocks the vision for, you know, for safety, we'll send our crews out and take care of that and build back owners. But I think going forward, you know, I even was planning to meet with Amy and talk about I dot because there's certain parts of our corridor, our business corridor on Nice Street, as you go up around the corner towards three fifty-five, there's, you know, unbuilt up areas. And so I, I don't know how difficult it's going to be to work with I dot to try to clean up the, that loose gravel shoulder look when the curb's there and then the curb's not there and there's all kinds of things. And, um, that I will not try to make these corridors, corridors more beautiful, you know, in function as well as, um, aesthetics, so.
Hopefully the businesses too will embrace this and, and tell their neighbor a, a, as they move out or whatever and say, hey, look, you know, the city has an ordinance. We have to clean up just like a little, you know, a little bit advanced so you're not behind, you have to be caught up. But just, hey, let you know, you know, there's an ordinance you got to clean up, so.
Yeah, maybe let the chamber know.
Yeah, and what we can do too is when we do issue occupancies for new businesses and new development, I mean, we could do just a summary list of, you know, all the obligations that they have with respect to property maintenance. Um, and obviously caveat that with, you know, there are some additional items that these are the, you know, the highlights. So we can certainly take initiatives to make sure that, you know, this information is conveyed, um, to a new business or a new property owner upfront.
Um, the other thing too is, uh, um, we are in the process of, um, uh, composing a letter to the residents, um, off these main streets that, um, are concerns. And, you know, uh, and I just want to stress that when, you know, when this letter does get put together and it does go out, it's going to be a blanket to all residents. So no one feels like they're being singled out. But the purpose of this letter is to let them understand where we're coming from and what our ideas are. And we'd like their cooperation. I believe last time at our last meeting, I did mention that, you know, it's, it's, I, I was hoping that things could get done a lot faster, but they put the, you know, the reins on me and said, whoa, 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 you know, you have to really get a lot of, you know, um, permission from this and I dot and all that. And it was kind of disappointing because I'm just, you know, just gung ho to get this done. But they, you know, they, um, explained to me that it, there's protocol. And I, and I get it now and, um, it's going to be a slow process. But our idea is to have Will County, um, as Ben had mentioned, you know, to clean up our own backyard so that people say, well, wait a minute, you haven't cleaned up yours, why should I worry about ours? So if we all work as, you know, as partners in all this, I think we'll be able to achieve where, the goal there and the, you know, where we want to try to end up at. And I, I'm very encouraged because staff is very supportive and, um, you know, the departments and so forth, forth. If we all work together, we're going to get, we're going to see some improvements, you know. Not in, you know, in a short period of time, not, you know, alone.
Make two recommendations or quick recommendations, the, the language that you have. If, I don't know if we can see what other communities are writing in that in terms of formalities and stuff.
I, I did use, I did research other communities that I was aware of that had, um, had different things.
The only concerns I have is the replacement time and, and everything that, for landscaping, say that portion, there's three portions, right? Landscaping, signage and asphalt. Landscaping, I know there's a definite difference between planting shrubs and trees. Like trees would probably take longer to replace. So maybe there's a different scale of when you have to replace. You can replace plants within a couple of days and trees are the next planting season or so forth. Maybe look at it that way, Tom can help clean up some of that language. The asphalt, maybe work with one of the civil engineers, say what is, I mean, if an entire parking lot is alligator, is a term that's, it looks bad, but it's not technically potholes. Somebody may have a loophole and say, I don't need to do anything. And then signage, there's also, just not that just the panels, there's the sides, there's the posts and everything, so. There's, we have consultants that can help us out with all those even landscapes that if you don't have any, I can help somebody help you with the landscape work too, too. So just to clean up that language, just be, if we're doing this, I, I'm a hundred percent for this. I think it's a great step, like Brian said, just cleaning up that language a little bit and have that real teeth there and go from there.
Okay, any other comments? All right, uh, move on to, uh, Lisa is going to talk about the replacement vehicle stickers. And James, I see that you have an agenda participation card. You have an agenda participation card?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let you speak after the presentation so you don't have to wait to.
Yes, was it? No, we were looking at, didn't we, you wanted to see, not consent, it was going to evoke because you wanted to see the language and.
No, no, I'm, I'm good for consent.
Oh.
Is everyone else?
I don't know if that language is going to change, Pam's going to look into it.
Okay, yeah, why don't we put on the consent, but yeah, I think there are a few things that we're going to look into.
Get that to you.
That's fine, yeah, you get it to me ahead of time, we can take a look at it. All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Um, the first item that was under, uh, my area was FD one. That was actually a repeat from, um, the last meeting we had, so we really don't need to go back and talk about that. What I'm bringing forth is, um, after our last committee of the hall, there was direction given to narrow down the options, um, that we were talking about on the replacement of the vehicle stickers with the electric tax.
That'll be FD two then.
Yes, so we're moving on to FD two. Um, the council, all the elected official, officials appeared to be, uh, on the same page that, uh, the vehicle stickers, that program is outdated and that we need to move forward with, um, the electric tax. We just needed to discuss, um, the options. So, um, the concerns came to local government offices and school districts. And Alderman Patrako said, asked me to do the research with the schools to find out how many kilowatt hours they were actually using and what that cost would be to them. And, um, in aggregate for all of the school districts, the, uh, the tax on them would have been, uh, twenty thousand dollars in aggregate. Um, they were all very pleased that we were considering, um, exempting them from this. Um, each one of those school districts actually did acknowledge that to me. So they were pleased that that was something that was, uh, coming through. And, you know, and, you know, on that same note, as the mayor mentioned, i- if we did, uh, tax both the local government and the school districts, they would be pushing that back down to the residents anyway. So, um, you know, the residents were going to be on the hook for it. Uh, so where we were kind of at with, you know, everybody's comments was really looking at option four. So we had five options altogether. Um, number one was the highest option that we could take, uh, five was the lowest option, and we moved to option four. Just to reiterate a little bit, if we look at the averages based on what the average household, um, uses in kilowatt hours versus how much the average household is using in vehicle stickers for, you know, two cars, the actual, um, estimated annual revenue additional to the residents on top of the, what they were paying for vehicle stickers is about an extra five dollars a year. So it comes out to about forty-six cents a month in a difference. Now again, that's the average household, that's not every house, some are going to be up, some are going to be down. But that's what the average based on what ComEd's telling us on an annual basis, um, what residents in town here use. So, um, what staff is recommending is that we start this on October first. So we need to approve it at the next council meeting so that ComEd has a month to get it in place, that we would start it on October first, using option number four and allowing for the exemption for local governments and school districts. And the ordinance that followed the council memo actually has that built in there for those two exemptions, so. Uh, any questions from staff on, um, on this item?
Um, did we discuss some for seniors, is there, is there going to be any?
Well, what we, what we discussed was that there weren't really any other municipalities that were offering that type of exemption. And the, you know, majority were really talking about really not doing that because it was going to be so labor intensive to go through that process. And what we were trying to get away from by eliminating the vehicle stickers was that intensive labor. So, you know, we were just moving forward with, uh, with the exemptions. The, the state does not allow for those exemptions for us. So if anything happened, it would be outside of what the state was allowing for.
Like, and, but I understand that, that the city was prepared.
But didn't we have comments?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we do James' comment now before we go into discussion on this?
Uh, my name is James McGuffig, I'm a resident of Lockport. And, uh, one of the things I, I think you people are failing to realize, there's a lot of people, we have senior citizens here that pay nine dollars a month, I mean, nine dollars a year for the vehicle sticker. They get hurt by this. We have a lot of elderly, I'm disabled, I have two vehicles, that's eighteen dollars per year. Now maybe these few dollars don't mean much to you, but to a person on a fixed income, it means a lot to me. Could be a couple of meals, could be a couple of meals for this lady over here. That's why I think is a better way of doing this. Now, the big problem that the city has is that they say that the administrative cost is very intensive. And what I'd like to propose is that you folks do a multi-year program. One year, eighteen dollars, three years, give a few dollars off. And maybe a ten-year sticker and allow them to transfer that sticker if they trade their vehicle or if the vehicle is in an accident. I think that's a much more fair way to do it than by hitting us with another tax. I have a resident across my street that doesn't have a vehicle, yet he gets hit with this tax. Now, I don't know about you folks, but I know I don't like to pay for something I'm not receiving. And I'm not receiving it if I don't have a vehicle. Is it, it, how many of you folks would complain about paying for a tax if you didn't have a vehicle? I'm sure you would, I know I would. I would say there's other options that this town and this council should think of. And one of them is like I say, offer like a, like a magazine subscription, a multi-year plan. If a person wants to pay a one-year sticker, that's fine. But now you're deferring your, your administrative costs over years. You don't have to send out those reminders every year to certain people. Myself, I would like a ten-year sticker. Give a person a ten-dollar break on that for ten years, a dollar offer every year. Very simple. Why increase the electric rate? I just think it's silly, I really do. I think you guys should really consider that, a multi-year sticker. It's a very simple solution and it also doesn't interfere with the people that are, are elderly in the community. And those are this, that are disabled that have, that don't have a vehicle. Maybe they have people that come over to take care of them. Have you ever considered those people? Apparently not. Because these people are paying nine dollars a year on a sticker like I am. All right? So I thank you guys and I hope you guys give that consideration, I really do.
Okay, thanks for coming up, James.
One other thing that I don't think has been talked about too much in the council, but one of the other issues is actually non-compliance as well, right? We, if somebody doesn't pay, frankly, honestly, the first year I lived here, I didn't even know you needed one, right? I, I think I moved in probably, actually I moved in before sticker date, but probably wasn't on some mailing list yet. So I probably went fifteen months or so without even having one. Um, but if somebody doesn't pay, we either get the point of trying to chase them down, which is expensive and troublesome. I mean, from last time we had this discussion, it seemed like we've taken some different methods in trying to do that with very mixed results. So this, this, the city stickers to some extent in honor tax as well, right? And so then people who, people who sign up pay for it, people who don't, don't, for instance, you know, I got a freebie for fifteen months that I shouldn't have gotten. Uh, I don't know if this is allowed, but, I don't care if he wants to ask me a question. But, so that's another thing here, right? And I heard once or twice other times, some things about allowing flexible options like what was just presented to us. In some ways, that could be more of an administrative problem, especially if it's, you could do one, two, three, five, ten year. I mean, I, I honestly don't even know how the department would track that in, in an accurate way. So, um, I understand there are puts and takes. I'll, I'll tell you, um, I'm definitely one whose family were paying more under this. I, I looked at my bill, we use more than the average, um, rate and we have two cars. Um, but to me, there's also convenience and, and frankly, this really was never just to pay for your car, right? I mean, it's, it's capital improvements that are used throughout the community on, on all kinds of things, right? So, um, there's a lot of debate and we'll probably have some more out, so I'll, I'll stop. But there, there's a lot of things to go here. My opinion again, as the liaison here, is that this is a very fair way, as was stated. This isn't, for the average resident, this will cost about forty cents a month. Plenty of people will save, you know, at the forty cents is, is pretty close, right? So probably almost half will save, a little more than half will maybe pay a little bit more than they would have under the, under the rate. There's outliers and, and, you know, um, one-offs, one-time things to, to every policy we do. But my opinion at least, as somebody who's kind of worked through this pretty closely, is this is about as fair as we're going to get in, in a fair approach.
Yeah, and I think this discussion started because, I mean, we, we all realized that the vehicle sticker was a tax. I mean, it, it was a tax and it was a source of revenue that, that the city was trying to get that wasn't really that feasible because of the administrative costs that it had and the fact that nobody likes going to get a vehicle sticker. Um, so I, I think it started by, by looking at alternatives. And I think, you know, this was one of the alternatives that was proposed that I think all in all is, you know, on a, on a scale of fairness to everybody, I, I think it was the, the fairest alternative that we could come up with.
Yeah, I, again, I think, you know, staff has done their homework on this and we've got figures, uh, and other communities and what they have established and where we align ourselves. Again, we're on the bottom of that list from what I, from what I last seen. We are on the bottom of that, uh, I shouldn't, I'm not going to say torn eighty list, but I know there's quite a bit of communities on that list that, that you had showed us. So again, with that, that we are asking for, we are at the very bottom of that list.
Yes, the rate that we're proposing is one of the lowest, especially in our neighboring community. We were, we really did, right? Because the majority of the, the towns that surrounded us were between the option one and option two. That was the majority. So we really did move ourselves down because we were looking at this as being a replacement tax for the vehicle stickers and not something that we were going to be achieving a lot of extra money for. So because of that, we went down to the option four.
And then, a- again, as you stated, I mean, we have to look at where this money is going to too. It's not going for staff, uh, payroll and all that, it's going for our capital improvement projects, okay? And we all know that we had a call from a resident saying, hey, I'm getting, I got drainage concerns up. I mean, you have to fund these things. I mean, we're probably a little bit lagging behind on some of these projects that we've been putting on for many years. Now we finally have a little bit of a tool, hey, we can, uh, you know, have a little bit of funding with this, depending where you're at, maybe not, you know, but it's a way to, to move many things along that we have been talking about. So, a- again, I, I, I have to echo that too. I think it's a fair thing, uh, that we have thought about, wasn't something, you know, last minute we thought about it. So again, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
So we're just looking for, um, moving this to the city council agenda at the next meeting.
It's an efficient, consistent revenue source. Um, that's what vehicle stickers were all about for the city was revenue.
Yeah, action item.
Consent?
Real quick, can I just take two comments real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
James, the, the resident that came up here, I, I, we hear your concerns, I just want you to know that, we do hear your concerns. I, I do want to take a moment to actually applaud you for actually not just coming up here and complaining, but you actually proposed a solution. A lot of residents that's. A lot of residents, that's great and I really applaud you for doing that and that I think more.
A lot of hopefully in debate with this staff.
I'm glad you brought both there. And for me, the last discussion that we had was about exempt or non-exempt. And we talked about like what other communities doing and not doing and all that stuff. That twenty thousand was split up between all the school district, just so everybody's on the same page, I think everyone saw that information. Some schools were charged twelve hundred dollars compared to that rate. I think the high school was twelve thousand. So out of a sixty-three million dollars, just so everyone compares, sixty-three million dollar budget, that's like point oh 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 one percent of their budget. So I don't think that would be.
But just to be clear, we're actually, that would be if we enforced this on them. We're proposing not to even do that, right?
That was my, from last time, saying to keep things simple, that we're not doing exemptions, we're not doing senior citizens, we're not, everybody's just getting taxed, it's a simple going forward. And wherever the majority votes, I'm fine with, I just wanted to clarify the questions that I had from last time is, you know, with that exemption, you know, if it was thirty thousand dollars for the high school or be an aid, that would sway my decision. Those numbers haven't swayed my decision, we still think that, you know, twelve thousand dollars for the high school, just for ease of consistency and we're trying to be more efficient, that is just across the board, so. But for that, I'm fine with everyone's discussion on how they wanna move forward. Option four or five for me, it's either one.
Okay, so action item for next time?
Yeah, I think an action item.
Okay, thank you.
The way it was written, right? Four percent and exemptions?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, option four and the exemption for the school.
For the school, yeah. Local government, right, is what the way it will actually be. So any body of local government will get it.
Local government and school district. You'll see in the ordinance, there's actually two exemptions that were listed.
I'm sorry, can you?
Tom, can you clarify that?
Were churches included?
Yes, let me, no, churches are not included. So part of the ordinance, section thirty-four point thirty-five and thirty-four point thirty-six, those were the two exemptions for local government and for school district, okay? That's what was built in the ordinance.
Can you specify what local government is, please?
Township, township, park district.
Anybody shows up on your tax bill?
Oh, okay.
Churches are the tax.
The churches are not exempt.
My thought, I'm gonna stop right there, my thought if they were.
No, they're not, the state does not allow for that exemption.
Okay.
So the state only allows.
Tom, can you clarify?
Yeah. The state statute under which we would have to operate with the utility tax allows municipalities to exempt other units of local government and school districts only. I think that's done to make it a little easier for ComEd and other electric utilities to do billings. Because whether an entity is a church or not, sometimes becomes a dispute in some communities. So what some towns have done, if they wanted to do some kind of break for churches or religious institutions, they've done a rebate program, but that does get back to the labor intensive part of it where you're charging the tax, collecting it, and then having the church come in, prove that it's a bona fide religious institution, and then rebating it through a check cut by the city. And that's where you have this monthly cycle of payment of the tax, checks cut back, and it does become labor intensive for the finance department.
I guess I just lost a little bit in the shuffle. I thought we had talked about churches, but.
There was some, I think.
There was some debate, yeah, we talked about it, yeah.
And as Lisa pointed out to me, I think probably maybe the unspoken rationale of that is that if you tax the taxing body, what they're gonna do is they're gonna raise their levies and in essence, the residents are gonna then be double taxed, so.
That was the mayor's concern, if I recall.
Yeah.
Where do Saint Joe's and Saint Dennis School fall in?
They are not, they are not government school districts. They will be taxed, yes.
So examples of local government, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, is schools, the townships, the two townships, park district.
Fire department.
Department.
Protection district, any entity that is a unit of local government, and there is a definition in the state statute for that, but I think.
Library.
Oldman Vandermeer mentioned, whoever's on your tax bill, that's would be exempt. This would not, the exemption would not include parochial schools or any type of private educational institution.
But if their use is much more over a residential amount, remember that the amount of tax goes down after two thousand kilowatts or something? And I think someone's average home is about twelve hundred to sixteen hundred kilowatts. So if a large church is utilizing more than a basic residence, that amount falls quite rapidly after, the more they use, the less they'll pay. So it won't impact them as much on a percentage basis, if that makes sense.
And again, Mr. Interay, we're one of the few that would even.
Done any exemptions, right.
Right.
Done any for, even for the local government, so I.
Correct.
And we should be proud of that, too.
Okay, so my next item was the water bill. So right now, everybody receives a water bill on a postcard. And here at the end of August, they're gonna now be receiving the full sheet of paper. I put a copy in front of each of the elected officials. I have a large one blown up over here and then it's also on your screen, just to point out a couple of the features. The first is it's gonna be in an envelope, so we need residents, it's gonna be very, very important for them to not throw it away, because they're gonna see an envelope from the city of Lockport and they're gonna wanna, I don't want that, but it is, it's important. They need to open that up and read it and notice that that is going to be their water bill here going forward. So it's gonna identify for them the service address and then down at the bottom will be the mailing address, so there's, it could be different for those people who have rental property. It'll tell you what the service period was from, whether it's an actual reading or an estimated reading. You'll see the graphic interface on there, so it'll show them their usage, which as I was scanning through ten thousand bills, that was really enlightening for me to see the resident usage up and down. And you see some people are very, you know, constant and use the same amount of water and other people are up and down. So I think that's gonna be very, very helpful for our residents so that if they have a water leak or if they have something that's going on in their home, it's gonna jump right out at them. They're gonna see that, they're gonna, it's gonna draw their eyes right to them. There's also a message area, you see it blacked out now because the information that the company gave us as a sample had, you know, another municipality's information in there, but that's gonna be an area for us to give messages. So, you know, if we're gonna do hydrant flushing or when the water quality reports go out, you know, any type of information that we wanna convey to our residents about even events, we could put right here. And we're communicating with our residents now on a monthly basis instead of just waiting for our quarterly newsletters or, you know, how often we're sending out our newsletters. So this is what's gonna happen here at the end of August, so the next bill you receive will no longer be a postcard, look for the envelope. But it looks good, doesn't it?
Is it possible to extend the shut-off for like thirty days? Just acknowledging that people may toss the first one they get?
Okay, so you.
Right, 'cause don't we normally within sixty days shut it off? Like thirty days, they get fined, sixty days, we shut off water?
Yes.
Can we temporarily make that ninety or a hundred and twenty days before we shut it off?
Yes, if we start to see that there's a resident that just hasn't paid in one month, you know, they usually look at history. Before they go shutting off any water, they look at history, they look at notes, they really take a look, they're not just shutting off blanketly, okay? There really is a lot of work that goes off, goes into before they shut anybody off. But I will mention to them that they try to give a little bit of leeway to somebody who they see pays all the time and then all of a sudden just stops.
Yeah, I mean, this is a good thing, right? I think it's great, but it's just, it's different. So people usually know to look for the postcard, right? And if they either just file this away and didn't open it for a while and forget about it or just see it.
You can be a little more lenient for a loss of seven.
Is there anything on the envelope to say?
I asked, I asked the company if they did have anything on there, but there isn't anything that they post on the envelope. I did ask that question, 'cause I thought if it says bill would close, you know.
You could pay to have an insert put in, but that insert's gonna say, here's your new bill.
Yeah, right.
We will do a press release and hopefully get some media exposure on this and we'll put it on the website and Facebook and that's about all we can do.
So we'll do a press release.
Try to alert everybody.
This is, yeah, so much about the cards that were lost in the mail, it just.
There'll be good messaging that we can put on here, so when you have events or things that we wanna get news out to, every homeowner will receive an opportunity to get a message from us within the bill, so.
Yep, really excited about getting that rolling.
Good communication.
Okay, my third item was the budget calendar. The 2016 budget is underway. The budget was kicked off on July twentieth when the information was sent off to the department heads for them to review. They'll be submitting their budget revisions, if any, back to me by Friday. And we'll go through some budget reviews and have some department head meetings end of September, beginning of October. And council will see it the first time on October twenty-first. So we'll be, if there's anything you wanna make sure gets put into the budget, any, you know, any specific ideas or things that you want us to make sure we accommodate in the first draft, please, you know, email me, let me know, give me your thoughts. We're gonna work with the department heads and see where we land. And we're looking for approval then on November eighteenth.
We'll still do some two-by-two-by-two meetings.
I was gonna ask, okay.
Sure.
If you have anything in advance, just let us know.
Absolutely.
And there was something that at our brief meeting the other day, that you had said perhaps we could put that as part of a budget.
Request?
I'm sorry?
I said something about a budget request?
Yeah, that, you know, just.
Was it the signage we're talking about?
I'm trying to think if it was the signage or was something to help with the beautification of Lockport? And I can't remember now exactly.
There'll probably be several things that we'll have in budget requests for 2016. One would be the study in regards to identifying these right-ofaways and who's responsible for what. The other would be probably some additional funding for landscaping improvements and taking care of some of the things that we identify.
That's what it is, okay.
I think is probably what you're thinking of. And then the third thing was identifying the right-ofway signage that's available and what we need to complete. There's a lot of stuff that Main Street started that we wanna go ahead and try to budget for and complete. We did budget a little bit this year. If anyone noticed, we put the new metro train station sign in to match the other signage that's in town. We wanna be consistent with that look and feel throughout the town. So there probably will be some budget requests for some additional signage, so I think those are the things I can remember when we met.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Chief, nothing for us today?
Chief?
Chief, nothing for us today?
Chief.
Okay, I think we're onto Amy.
Okay, my first item on the agenda is the Hawthorne Preserve Letter of Credit Reduction Request. And actually, it's not really a letter of credit, it's a cash bond that they posted with us at the beginning of the subdivision improvements. This year, Hawthorne Preserve completed the detention pond degrading, the plantings, the aerators, and some storm sewer, and a missing handicap ramp at the northwest corner of one hundred fifty-first and Farrow Road for the bike path. The only outstanding item left to be completed is a smaller amount of storm sewer in the location where the topsoil stockpile is located. The developer has requested that the cash bond be refunded in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-four cents, leaving an outstanding balance of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, that's wrong. It's currently at one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. This, they're wanting a reduction in the amount of ninety-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. And this will leave a fifty thousand dollar maintenance bond that they are required to keep in place until their one-year maintenance period is up. And then the four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars remaining to complete the small amount of storm sewer left to be completed. So our recommendation is to allow the reduction of the maintenance, or of the cash bond to leave an outstanding amount of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
I can speak to that, they did a lot of work over there. Everything looks great. So the fifty thousand dollar maintenance would be for like any plantings that die or anything like that that needs to be replaced or?
Yeah, actually, the fifty thousand dollar maintenance, the maintenance period for the fifty thousand dollars actually started last November when we accepted the roadway improvements. So that fifty thousand dollars will be released, well, it can be released as of this coming November. The plantings that are out there, there's a maintenance plan and they still kind of are on the hook for, I don't know exactly, according to our agreement, how long they have to maintain those plantings. I think it's a five-year maintenance plan.
Okay.
So.
We don't get to hold anything over there, as far as the bond goes with that?
Not according to the agreement that we entered into them. The fifty thousand dollar maintenance bond, I believe, was only for the infrastructure, the city infrastructure. And that was, at our meeting in November of last year, we agreed to accept the roadway improvements and the infrastructure and start that one-year maintenance period at that time, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I think consent.
Sound okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, my second item on the agenda is also a letter of credit reduction request. Creekside Estates, South Phase Two, they posted a letter of credit, or they posted a letter of credit in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars at the initiation of the project. And they are, have completed a lot of the roadway improvements, all of the storm sewer, all of the sanitary, all of the water main, the surface layer of asphalt on the roads, the sidewalks, the parkway trees, and those will all be done as the houses become built and stuff. So they are requesting that their letter of credit be reduced by three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine dollars and fifty cents, leaving an outstanding letter of credit of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents, including eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents for completion of the remaining improvements, including streetlights, the surface layer of asphalt, the signage, and sidewalk and parkway trees. Plus forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars as their required ten percent warranty. And our recommendation is to allow the reduction of the letter of credit by three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nine, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine dollars and fifty cents.
I know we do it a lot of times, but some of these improvements haven't been accepted yet. I mean, is there a reason why, is it matter of course, we release the funds or the letter of credit if it hasn't been accepted yet?
They've been inspected in the field and they're satisfactory. We don't typically accept those improvements until the final layer of asphalt's been put on and more of the improvements are done.
Okay.
And that's why we have that warranty that we hold on to.
Okay.
And then when more of those improvements get done and the developer decides they wanna go ahead and finish out all of those public improvements, put the surface layer of asphalt in, then that's when we start that one-year maintenance period. So we have that forty-four thousand dollars that we hold until whenever they decide to do that.
Okay, that makes sense. Comments? Consent?
That's all I have.
Okay, do we have any new business? We have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting then?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do we wanna take five before we go into city council? JR, I don't know.
We'll just have the consent and we have one action item.
Okay.
And one action item, then we can take the break.
Just go ahead.
Second session.
Sounds good to me. All right, let's just go right into city council then. Roll call.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Okay, consent agenda, can I have a motion to have a consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, and on the consent agenda, we have the regular city council meeting minutes of July fifteenth. We have the committee of the whole meeting minutes of July fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. We have payroll period ending July nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. We have approval of bills. We have increasing the amount of Lockport auxiliary officers from ten to fifteen, ordinance number fifteen dash oh one seven. Renewal of lease agreement with only Department of Natural Resources, resolution number fifteen dash oh five seven, and disposal of surplus vehicle truck number seven oh five, resolution number fifteen dash oh nine A.
That was Jason and Darren, so you know, that's how you're looking.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
and disposal of surplus vehicle truck number seven oh five, resolution number fifteen dash oh nine A. Can I have a motion to approve the, the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and Ben, you have...
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, yes, I just have two items this evening, both for requests for executive session, one for acquisition of property, two C five, and one for personnel-related matters of two C one.
Okay. And I think Amy, you're up again?
Okay, my agenda item tonight is a two thousand fifteen bridge maintenance contract supplement. Last year, we approved a contract with Willett Hoffman to do the engineering for the two thousand fifteen bridge maintenance contract, which will take care of a lot of the maintenance issues that are identified in our MBIS bridge inspections every year. A little later in the year, we, our administrator approved a supplement to the contract in the amount of seventy-eight hundred dollars for the design of the temporary repairs that we were proposing for the Illinois seven frontage road bridge. And if y'all recall, we put those, we, we got proposals for those, put it out to bid, and the bids came in really extremely high, like five hundred thousand dollars, which was what spurred the HBP program funding request to I dot, and, and now we're in the process of getting our phase one engineering going for that project. So those, that, that part of the project was eliminated. The remaining improvements, the contract documents for the remaining improvements were completed in July and is currently out to bid with a bid opening scheduled for August twelfth. During the design process, we found out that the city would need three separate Army Corps permits for work on three of the structures that, in the maintenance project, that included work on the wing walls and in, in the creek. Willett Hoffman provided a proposal, this wasn't included in the original scope of the project, so Willett Hoffman provided a proposal to include the necessary work to obtain those permits, which will include an environmental wetland survey for each of the three substructures, the soil and water application fees, the ECOCAT fees, and the SWIP plan to satisfy the conditions for our MPDES permit. The proposal was for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-two thousand, fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents for the additional work. Our recommendation is to approve the contract with Willett Hoffman, or the supplement to the contract with Willett Hoffman Associates in the amount of twenty-two thousand, fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents for the additional work associated with the Army Corps permit. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any comments? Do we need a roll call, do we need a roll call on this? Thanks.
Yes.
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 Okay, does anyone have any new business? No? Okay, then I, can I have a motion to recess the city council meeting to go into executive session for purposes of two C five acquisition of property and two C one personnel?
Make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, why don't we take five before that? Oh, okay. Roll call? Yes.
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 Okay.